Alright, City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1407. The time is a little bit after eight, it's 8:01. We're gonna start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so everybody have their agenda ready? Alright, we're gonna start with item number one, which is the roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Present.
Brown.
Here.
Bart. Harrison.
Here.
Hope.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
Alright, I need a motion to excuse Councilwoman Clark.
A motion that we excuse Councilwoman Clark.
One second.
It's been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Alright, hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting, aye?
Aye.
Oh, and I also need a motion to excuse our law director, Mr. John Wykoff.
A motion that we excuse our law director, Mr. John Wykoff.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion? Alright, hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting, aye?
Aye.
Alright, and that motion passes to excuse Councilwoman Clark and our law director. Alright, moving on to item number two on the agenda, it's the minutes. Has everyone received the minutes? Are there any changes or corrections to be made? Alright, hearing none. We're gonna move on to item number three, which is presentations. And we don't have any. But I will need a motion to amend the agenda so we can hear a presentation from our fire chief. Is there a motion?
A motion that we amend our agenda to receive a presentation from our fire chief.
Second.
Alright. It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
No discussion.
Alright, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to amend?
Brown.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hope.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Alright, motion to amend passes, so Chief Jones, take it away.
Thank you, that'll be somewhat brief.
Oh, it needs to be.
As you're probably aware, that the Forest Fair Village Mall was shut down for fire code violations. And let me start off before I move on to that, that buildings of, commercial buildings of this size have been architected or engineered and designed, and then the building department will approve those once those buildings are complete. Once that building is complete, fire department takes over the maintenance code of that. We maintain what has been approved through the building process or an architectural engineering design. Since 2000, I'm sorry, 2015, we've had issues with Forest Park Village. Forest Fair Village, I'm sorry, the mall, where they have been delinquent with their sprinkler system, alarm system, smoke evac system, which is their HVAC units. They were shut down in 2015. They went to the Board of Building Standards in Columbus to try to appeal those complaints. They lost, and they came down here to Hamilton County and got adjudication order to stop that process. A judge stopped that, we did not stop that. My job and responsibility is to make sure the buildings are safe for people and make sure the buildings stay here from, well, no fire being introduced to them. 2020, in March, we did an inspection of the mall, and we found the mall being deficient in all those three items, and including they were locking and screwing doors shut. We had to stop because COVID hit, everything shut down. Coming here just recently, in November, we were called to the mall for an alarm drop. Our fire department could not make entry into the mall. The doors are padlocked shut, and there's people in the mall, that cannot happen. We found additional reports where the sprinkler system does not work, the alarm system does not work, HVAC systems do not work, so there's, the building is not meeting its certificate of occupancy, it does not meet the agreements we made with the present owners, who I call absentee owners. They're not here, they're not present. So, it's a shame that Jeff and his business and the Be-Adventures has to fall on this, but the owners and the mall manager knows all about this. And here we are once again with the mall. If something happens in that building, and someone gets trapped and dies, because I say it's okay that they can run in here and let people continue to allow public into the business, they'll come to me and sue me when something happened. Their families, they've never seen for 40 or 50 years, be coming to come sue the city and sue myself. So, we have to make sure that the building is safe for the public, and that's where we're at right now. It's, the building is closed, I spoke to the mall's attorney several times, I haven't heard anything. I don't know, I don't know if they're gonna move forward with anything with it. So, it's closed as of present time, there's no one in the building except for mall management, so they can still maintain things, and the security guard's in there for a fire watch purpose only. Another thing, it was a discussion, is looking at Kohl's and Bass Pro. These are separate structures. I'll add in Biggs too. These are separate structures. They have their own fire protection, they have their own water, their own electric, they have, everything is separate. They're attached to the building, they have two hour separations from the mall, but they're not, their alarm is not dependent on the mall, their sprinkler is not dependent on the mall. And so, with the other, the Be-Fits and Be-Adventures, they are part of the mall. They're under the covered building. You cannot separate them out. If they do, it's not, I can't approve that. You gotta go get engineer drawings or architects to design something of that in such nature, which, I mean, I wish you luck, because it's a covered building. You can't change that, that's all it is. You have to take the building out, remove it from the structure, and put it in the parking lot. So, that's what is the nutshell. I appreciate me giving you an opportunity to explain briefly what's going on with the mall, and I don't know if you want to entertain any questions, but I believe you guys, you got a busy night.
Alright, thank you for that, Chief Jones. Does any member of council have any questions for Chief Jones?
I do have a question, Chief. So, you said like Biggs is a separate entity inside the mall?
Yes, yes.
And they've been gone for over 20 years too, right?
Yes, it's walled off. They have their own sprinkler system, everything. That's the other thing about the mall. We're not for sure about the emergency generator. It was back in 2020, the power, we lost power around here. The whole mall was dark. So, the generator is there to support the mall's egress operations, and so, they're very deficient in multiple areas, and they have no interest. They have no interest. If they had some interest, they'd have done something with it years ago. But I don't want our folks or our neighboring communities to be in that mall. Mall walking's wonderful, but it's very unsafe in that building. I mean, also the law enforcement side, there's some folks that you don't wanna be in there with, so.
Are there opportunities to post any external notice?
It's posted.
Okay. So, people are aware?
Yeah, the building's posted, it's closed, you can't get in it.
So, they can't get into it at all?
No, it's closed.
Okay.
Bass Pro and Kohl's are still open. But the rest of the mall is closed.
First of all, Chief Jones, I know you take your job very seriously, and we know our Forest Park Fire Department is really good at what they do. It's actually troubling to hear that there was an alarm, and you actually couldn't even get into the building at one point in time. So, we know this owner isn't doing their, they're not holding up their end of the bargain, but, and you can stop me if this is completely out of your wheelhouse, but as I understand it, Kohl's and Bass Pro being the anchor institutions were designed differently to have their own fire suppression.
That's correct.
Now, you're also saying that Biggs has its own as well, so are you aware of the person specifically that someone would need to get in contact to hypothetically, if their business wanted to temporarily move into one of those anchor institutions within the mall in order to continue to conduct business? Would they have to come to the city for that, or would they have to speak to the owner and get permission? Because Biggs is completely walled off, so it would just be a matter of opening it up and seeing if they fit the specifications for what that hypothetical person would need?
Yes, they can talk to the mall, and then they can talk to the city with some of the requirements all. But Biggs has been destroyed. Inside, there's been holes, they've dug big holes in there because they're checking on the footing. All, everything, all the wiring's been from a previous burglar, someone robbed the place, it's been stripped, all the rooftop units are gone. I mean, it's a building shell, you can build from that, yes.
Does anybody else have any other questions for Chief Jones?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so we're gonna move on from that. Just a point of order. Would we need to amend the agenda to reflect that all the council is present? Or can we just keep moving forward?
We just note the time, and you just keep going.
Okay, that's what I thought. Alright, so we're gonna move on to item number four now. This is communications from the public. So, this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. Someone recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and your address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription, and comments are limited to five minutes. So, if anyone would want to address council, now is the time to do it. You can come right on up to the podium, and we thank you for being here tonight.
Hello, my name is Kenya Flowers. I am our owner, along with my parents, for Be-Adventures. We're located at 600 Cincinnati Mills Drive, Forest Park, Ohio, 45240. We're a family recreation and event center. We actually bought it back in 2017, opened 2018, when we bought, when we got into the business. We actually got all of our fire stuff, they come and inspect, all of our stuff had been approved, system, sprinkler system, everything, so we trying to find out why we have been passing fire inspections at our building and not being notified. We have paid thousands and thousands of dollars for our HVAC since we've been there. They haven't, we've been panted ourselves. We done summer camps in there, it's been expected by the city when they come and do it in order for you to do summer camps with children in there, field trips, it's been expected by the city of Cincinnati Hamilton County in order for us to have it in there. We do have interests, which we're right next door to Kohl's. Kohl's have an interest just like us. They have an outside interest, but we, you have to go through entry two to get to us, but we still have an outside interest. Like, we can, you can get in, you can get out four different ways from our place. So, we, as a family, has affected us enormously. Like, my parents are retired, they do it for me and my children. I have two children that are college students, I support. I have my grandmother, who has dementia, we take her for full time. This is our only income. Our son has Down Central. I get no support. I've never got any government support or anything. So, not to be shut down, not without a notice, will put us on the streets. So, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little emotional, because it's hitting me hard. But, this is not just employees, this is a family ran business. There is no way around it. There's no way to give a 24, 30 day, 30 months, I mean, 30 days, 60 days. We can move in front to media play, but my point is, it hit me hard, because I know that every, all of my children depend on me. So, it's personal. We stayed in communication. We don't understand how we're passing our inspections, you can get out different ways, but the mall is not. Why weren't we notified before we sound and put $50,000 down? That's a lot. That's a lot to lose and just move and be out of there like that. Not, no notification. So, not alone is affecting me, but it's affecting my following. I call him my brother, because we've been knowing each other about 11, 12 years. That was his first business in there, I'm taking this real personal, and it's his home, it's his heart. He built it alone with our shining star. She's a trainer, personal trainer, worked there. If you ask this woman how hurt, which she can't, you won't believe it. A lot of people depend on us. I just wanna know, how did we get this far for so many years, not being notified? But what I do wanna say is, we've been, my family has been residents for over 40 something years. And we plan to stay and love Forest Park, and we stand behind the city. You all came together and said that you guys helped us find a location, but it was just, hit hard when you just drop off. We already had it hard when COVID came. My parents almost died, we closed the business for nine months, still pay our bills. They both, my dad was on a respirer, what is it? Ventilator coma. Both my parents, I took them both. We lost income for the long list, we still bitter than it. We have not resurfaced from that, so to just keep, it hit me hard. I have a lot of people depending on me. I know it's not you guys' fault, but we appreciate, if there's anything you can do for us to help us move forward. We're very active in community. All my children, my children graduate from Wentworth, and so I'm the first alumna from Wentworth, so I know the city is standing behind us, and hope you just take this and, you know, think if you were in this situation. I think my daughter said it all, but she's right. We were affected extremely hard, less than a 24 hour notice. And we did, we paid a lot of money for the furnace, which we know we weren't responsible for, but we're a new business, what we gonna do? We signed a contract, even though it said as is, and keep maintenance up. We, our thing was, how you maintain something that wasn't originally working? You know, like a car, you buy a car, new or used, you maintain it once you buy it, because it's working. How you gonna maintain something broke? So, we paid to have that working. It kept going down, we kept, each time they come, twice a year, it cost us almost $300. It cost, cut the furnace on, cut it off, cut the air conditioner on, cut it off. Fire stuff, fire panel stuff, we paid several hundred and made payments. And it would work with the main panel, our fire alarm, but we made sure that was done. We put a lot of money in it just to run this business, and she's right, it was $50,000 alone. Only 20, and 24 of that went to deposit, so we were doing good for that one year, like she said, until COVID hit. And then after we tried to bounce back, this hit. So, this is detrimental to us. We will have to file bankruptcy if we don't get help. That's all I can say.
Thanks for taking the time to hear me out. My name's Jeff Bover, and I am the owner of Be Fit across from Be Adventurous. I live, so that the business address, 1050 Cincinnati Mills Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio, down in the Forest Village Mall, and it's a matter of safety. You know, we all lost a lot of money. Chief Jones nailed it on the head. It's unsafe, and it's an absentee owner that, I mean, I've been there for 10 years. We have built it, you know, I've been there since member number one to member number 1500 is what we've got right now, most of the people coming from Forest Park. And it is an absentee owner, but one that we thought was keeping up with the building. We know when the HVAC goes wrong, we, I fix it. The parking, the reason why the parking lot is lit up is because I put those lights up, and that's kind of what we get for being in there. But, like Ms. Kenya and Ms. Pat, I continue to pass fire inspections without any, you know, I got a new fire panel up there that's two years old. I pass Forest Park fire inspections every single year, and I guess, I, you know, a whole year has gone by since I've been inspected, and everything's up to code, but I guess I'm just replaying Wednesday in my head of how it transpired, and it's nobody's fault, but I guess over the last 10 years, you know, collecting the sales tax and paying Forest Park, you know, maybe $250,000 over the last 10 years, and then, and just income tax over the last 10 years, probably close to a million. I wish somebody maybe could have given me 30 days? Seven days? 12 hours? I would have been to lease. I, as a matter of fact, today, I looked at two properties. Here's the reason why I'm here. I looked at, I've gotta move, there's no resolution for the mall, we know that. There's a place in Forest Park that we like, there's a place in Fairfield that we like. I'm scared to death to move my business in Forest Park, I've been here for a decade. And not because of, I'm not gonna say anyone mishandled anything wrong, but it's, I mean, we, it's unbelievable, I guess. I don't wanna go to Fairfield, I like Forest Park, we support Wentworth, we support officers when they go down, we go to their fundraisers, we are, I thought we were a part of the community, but we were almost treated like a part of the mall Wednesday. Like, we knew, like, we knew Alex and Tommy Demetriades, or we, I've never even met those guys in my life. And Will Domer should have told you, well, maybe the fire department should have told us. Maybe the city should have told us. Maybe they should have said, go move your business, because it's awesome, because it's the only place to go work out in Forest Park, and because everyone goes there, heads up. So, I'm, I'm, I, we need help. We lost in the last 72 hours, you know, we're talking about losing money. On December 1st, we lost a $40,000 batch right there, and there's, we don't, we recovered from COVID because all the other gyms were shut down. Not the case in this situation. All my members went to other gyms, they need to work out. Dr. Cobb, have you gone to another gym yet? I worked at another gym today. I'm not allowed in my gym unless I'm removing equipment. And we will, just will it be in Forest Park? I, I, you know, Chief Jones has been excellent, is trying to find out, figure out solutions, you know, Wednesday, it was, what's the solution? There is no solution. Today, what's the solution? There is no solution there. But a decade in Forest Park and what I've paid, I would, I would love help. I would love to partner with you. I don't know, that was a blind side, and I understand aggravation with the mall, especially on the fire department's behalf, the whole community's behalf, it's negligence. But when we're stuck in our little corners and we don't communicate with the mall, and our mall manager, Domer, is more concerned about his grassroots, he's not at the mall. Who's gonna communicate with us? We expect the people that we pay taxes and the people that we pay into, we expect a little bit of communication if we're running businesses and paying taxes like lawful businesses. That's all. I mean, this was, if it puts you out of business, it, I'm gonna be lucky if it doesn't put me out of business, that's up to God, that's not up to me. But I am moving this week, that, and, and I don't know, I guess, I'm scared to death to go sign a 10-year lease because of what happened this week. Scared to death in Forest Park. That's all.
I'm sorry, I did, I'm remiss to mention that Donnie Jones, city manager, how are you? Nice to meet you. He did say he would help, he would look for a location for us and city funding. And the city manager of development, economic development in Fairfield, he said that he would also look for a place and help us as well with relocation funds. I don't know how soon that'd be, but like I said, our stuff is, we don't have money coming in, even pay stuff, it's automatically coming out of our account, so we, you know. But I forgot, I was remiss to say. And Alfie Jones, he's been very understanding too, the police chief.
My name is Marcus Cobb. I live at 1362 Way Cross Road. My wife and I have been there since 1989. Prior to that, I lived in Forest Park on Way Cross Road, excuse me, on, dear Lord, in the C-section, I'll get it straight in a minute, since 1974. So, I've been a Forest Park resident for over 40 years. And I've been self-employed my entire adult life. I'm a physician, I'm a graduate of University of Cincinnati twice over. And there's a difference between employed and self-employed. And what I mean by that is, I did primary care. Office was in Forest Park. I've been a Forest Park supporter forever. And doing rounds at hospitals when I was doing internal medicine. It's interesting, somebody that is employed, if they get sick or injured, they look to take as much time off as they can possibly get. But when you're self-employed, you make it happen no matter what. When I would make rounds, I rounded at all the local hospitals. Mercy Fairfield was our main one, but I used to round at the Jewish Hospital. I did residency at Good Samaritan Hospital, and rounded there. Bethesda Oak Hospital, Bethesda North Hospital, all over the city. And if you have an employee that's in the hospital, I had to put in the hospital, I make rounds on them, but if they are self-employed, they are doing business from the phone, from their hospital bed. My point is, employed people look for every way to get off. Self-employed people, we make it happen. You do what you have to do. I've been self-employed my entire adult life. I'm repeating that on purpose, because I get it. But if you've never been self-employed, you don't get it. Nobody pays me to stay home. I have to be working. There's no paid vacation time. I was just out of the country for one week on vacation, my first vacation this year, one week. Because I can't take a bunch of time off, because I don't get paid. I'm asking this committee, this city, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. We got a tough situation, but instead of just shutting stuff down, and I learned the morning, I went to go do my workout, and Phyllis was driving around, I walk up, there's a sign on the door, and I'm like, what? And prior to that, I have been a member of Fit Works since they opened in 1990. So, I have supported this community, both by having my own office in this area when I was doing primary care, and the businesses locally. And everybody, every community, like I say, you know, we appreciate our small businesses, because that's the backbone of the community. Good. Act like it. I'm asking you to act like it. Do you really support small businesses? And a situation comes up that nobody had any way to prepare for, how could you see this coming? You can't. So, what I'm asking everyone that's involved, any decision-making, put yourself in Jeff's shoes. You're a small business owner, put yourself in these guy's shoes. How would you want to be treated under these same circumstances? And then do it.
Alright, would anybody else like to come up and address council?
Good evening. Do say, apologize and just shift the tone here, but I do have a different topic to discuss with you. My name is Shawn Davidson. I'm the manager of the Forest Park branch of the Cincinnati and Hamilton County Public Library, located at 655 Way Cross Road. Want to thank council for giving me time tonight to just give some updates and generally tell you about the past few months at the Forest Park branch. As all of council knows, but maybe not the public here tonight knows, but the library is wrapping up on the design phase of our next generation library to be located on Northland Boulevard, just east of the post office. Seeing the evolution of this project firsthand, I can truly say that the input gathered at our many community listening sessions, discussions with area youth, civic leaders, as well as library staff, has directly informed the direction of this project, and I can't wait to enter the next phase together over the next coming weeks and coming months. That being said, I did want to come here tonight to highlight some of the library's many offerings and events from the past year at our current facility. The library has always been well-known for activities for youth, such as our weekly storytimes, our popular Discover Summer Reading Program, outreach to schools, and early literacy centers. This past year, we have also helped area students with hundreds of after-school homework help sessions available at no charge, as well as free book distribution, including over 700 books in Spanish made available through a generous grant through the Scripps Foundation. Our library has also taken on some new initiatives and provided new services in response to direct community needs. That's from listening to council, and also initiatives from Mayor Brown as well, that you've passionately discussed, such as workforce development, small business assistance, and also improving access to health information and resources. This summer and fall, we've worked closely with the Forest Park Fire Department to attend We Thrive events throughout the community. We also hosted our very own Community Day, where the fire department also attended, connecting families to health-related organizations. The department will also be hosting an event at our ranch during the upcoming winter break to promote health. to promote healthy living and distribute free bike helmets to youth, uh, just in time for those new bicycles they might get for the holidays. Um, on December seventeenth, we will be hosting a free CPR training class for participants to get CPR certified, uh, no cost to them. Also, just a couple of weeks ago, when the Hamilton County Public Health, uh, expressed the need to get COVID tests distributed on our area of the county, uh, just two late, two days later, we had the structures in place, uh, to distribute, um, free tests on location. Um, for small businesses, our branch partnered with several area organizations this fall, including the Forest Park Chamber of Commerce, Cincinnati Compass, the African, uh, Professionals Network, and the Latina Entrepreneur Academy, among others, to create a Small Business One-O-One series that attracted over fifty local attendees over three sessions. And we plan on, uh, continuing this series into the spring uh, to support what is, uh, clearly an entrepreneurial-minded community. Uh, looking ahead, our next generation library facility will enable us to do even more of, uh, what we're talking about. Uh, imagine holding a small business seminar and to follow that, uh, with an event in the new microspace where we could print a vinyl banner to advertise your new business, or create custom-made designs on our new laser engraver. Or how about a, hosting a community event in the largest library meeting room in the county that can hold over three hundred people? Um, that could even spill outdoors into the new, uh, courtyard area. That will just be simply amazing. Uh, so certainly, uh, the future is bright for us here in Forest Park and for the library. And I thank you again for your time. I'm happy to answer questions now, but I know, um, probably want to get things moving forward. So I'll stay afterwards, uh, as where, as well, where I can be happy to talk to anyone here. Thank you.
I just want to say, Sean, thank you for all your hard work and compassion and, um, your support for our community. Um, it's been a long, um, journey. And so thank you so much for just serving our community well. And so thank you for being our community partner.
Thank you. Yeah. I look back and, I mean, we've been talking about this for three, four, five years now, just to see it. Yeah, to see it come to fruition. And I believe some of our representatives will be attending the, uh, Planning and Joining Commission meeting coming up soon. So, yep. Yep, moving, moving ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, well, first of all, I want to say thank you to everybody who's come out tonight. I know this is not the best circumstances, but we do always appreciate what residents and business owners come to council because we want to hear from you because you are our boss. Essentially, we are responsible to you. So I know it's kind of been stated a few times, and I understand that everybody does understand the particulars of the situation, that we do have, um, an absentee owner, and then that the fire code is the fire code, um, and that essentially it's by no, no one's fault per se, but there is still harm. There is still harm done that needs to be addressed. So, um, on behalf of myself and since I do hold this position, whatever power it may hold, um, I would like to apologize to each and every one of you officially on the behalf of the city of Forest Park. I don't, I know that may not hold much weight, but I do sincerely mean it. Um, this is a very difficult situation. Uh, we do appreciate all of you making an investment for being here for a decade and then contributing to people's health and, and, um, just the economic development of our, our city. Um, I know you've been working with, um, Chief Jones and City Manager Jones, um, to address the situation, but we have a lot of work to do as far as, um, communication, as far as notifying people of, of these type of issues. But we know that you're not like the, the person who owns the mall. We know that you are making an investment in the community. We appreciate that investment. And even though if you, I couldn't blame you if you wanted to go somewhere else, we would ask that you continue to remain here. And we're going to do everything that we can to ensure that that happens. So, City Manager, um, we are going to need to allocate some type of resource to assist in these business owners, helping them relocate, um, within the city. I don't know exactly if that means we have to look into the general fund, or if we have to apply to grants on their behalf, but we are going to do it. Um, that being said, I don't want to just talk at you and give you political answers or something that doesn't seem sincere or to deflect. I'm going to ask you sincerely, what is it that we can do to help rectify the situation or to make the transition as smooth as possible? Because this is unacceptable. There's just no other, there's nothing else to say about it. We see that there are changes happening. We see that there are investments, like the library being made in Forest Park. And just because there's new investment coming doesn't mean we forget about the people who've already invested, who have already put in a decade of their time, who have already contributed to making Forest Park the great city that it is. So I'm asking you sincerely, what resource, what assistance, what funding, what financing do you want? And I'm not just leaving that up as rhetorical. Come back to the podium and, and say it now because we can, we can brainstorm at least. I work for you. And if I'm here until twelve, tonight, we will discuss this.
Absolutely. Mayor Brown. So on behalf of Be Fit, um, my husband is a member of Be Fit. Yeah?
What's his name?
Michael Moore.
Oh, yes, I know why I remember Mr. Moorewell.
Um, and so they are an important piece of our community, important organization in our community, important business in our community. And also they're important to the quality of life of our community. For example, my husband showed up, the doors were locked, and he doesn't know what to do with himself.
There's a lot of people that's.
He hasn't been able to work out. That's his routine. It helps him release stress. It helps him get in shape. And we want our residents to have quality of life, so they can live longer, have improved health quality, um, outcomes. And so, um, it is very important, and we hope that you and the other businesses stay in Forest Park because we are a community. And so we hope that we can put things in place and resources to support you, um, because we don't want you going to other communities. Because I know personally, I used to be a member, um, um, before COVID hit, and, but we still continue to, um, um, support your business in, during COVID. When we couldn't, didn't have access, but we still continue to support your business because we didn't want you, uh, not to be able to, um, recover when COVID was, um, over. And so we felt it was important to continue to support you during COVID. So please consider, um, all the resources that we have to keep businesses in our community. Thank you.
A little bit about what you just said, um, just so we can kind of set the bar a little bit. I did speak with the county, uh, the county administrator, uh, twice this week, or twice since last week. And, um, they are looking for, we, we've asked them to look at anywhere they can, whether it's their, uh, COVID money or whatever, um, CDBG block grant money, um, any kind of county resources that they could dedicate to the two, uh, businesses to help you folks relocate, whether that's rental assistance or moving expenses or both. Um, so they are currently, um, looking, and they pulled some of their staff together to see what they can do. I have spoke with, um, uh, I'm not sure exactly who everyone was, but, um, the city does stand ready to, uh, use some of our economic development funds as well to help in the relocation, um, of these two businesses. So we're looking, we've talked to the promenade, we've talked to other business owners. I think you may have even gone through there today. Uh, so, uh, but there are some places, we're trying to work this out. And, uh, we're committed to helping financially. Obviously, we don't have millions of dollars, um, that, uh, but, you know, we do have a vested interest and we, um, we do support, as Dr. Moore said, we do support economic development for, for people who are coming here. And we encourage them to come here. So we want to make sure that we encourage folks to stay. Um, so, just so you know, that's the update. I haven't had a chance to get back with you folks. Uh, but I don't have an update yet from the county other than he's pulled his staff together and they're brainstorming. We, of course, have some, some of our buddies as well. So, um, it's like the mayor says, we have funds available, and, um, it may not be exactly what everybody needs, but, uh, we stand ready to help.
Right. So really quick, I, I do want to, I do want to say, um, is it possible that everyone can provide like the exact specifications that you would need on buildings and, um, what you would need as far as like, you know, square footage and stuff like that? Just so as we look at not only the buildings that are in the city and talk to other business owners, but, um, work with county, work with the county to see if, if you do need to relocate somewhere else, we can help facilitate that process.
Sure. I've, uh, they, they provided that. Both of them did.
Sure.
And we're still, but I provided that to the county.
So I've been a member of Be Fit, and I agree totally. It's a great place to work out. I brought my children to the Be of Interest. Yes, it's a great family space. Um, on behalf of myself and Dr. Moore, and I, I, I can't speak for council, but we do sit here as one accord. I beseech you. I beseech you. Before you make a decision to move to another city or another area, please allow our city manager to talk with you, negotiate with you, find space that may work for you before you decide to move somewhere else this week. I beg you to do that. Again, as Dr. Moore said, Dr., um, City Manager Joan, Mayor Brown, and the rest of council, I'm certain, we do not want to see you leave the city of Forest Park. We really want development, economic development in the city of Forest Park. And I truly believe that our city manager is going to do everything he possibly can, and we are going to back him to do everything he possibly can to keep you here. So again, I beseech you. I beseech you. I am begging you. Before you sign a lease, before you go somewhere else, please talk with our city manager. Please give us an opportunity to fix it. Please. Thank you.
After you, uh, I know that you have some, um, things. Um, when this was brought to my attention last week, Kenya broke my heart. When she first opened, um, the dance studio with Dancing David, if you know anything about her son, absolutely light up a room. Millions of views. And we came over there and we created a space. You, you did it out of nothing. And when, when, when I was, when I learned about it, it just crushed me. I am, I love council, but it's five hundred dollars a month. That doesn't pay four thousand dollars of rent at my business a month as a self-employed person. That is how. You only eat giga D, which you kill. And I, I can't fathom what would happen if that just goes away. And I cannot open the doors to my company. I don't know if I missed it. Um, when we are going through inspections, when I'm going through my fire inspections, I pass them, but I'm also very well aware of the entire building, as I have literally fifty percent of it. But we're in close con- conversation as well as the entity I work with, um, and telling me what's going on and what needs to happen. I don't know if I missed where, what happened with the internal inspection from this space to overarching and what was commanded and expected of the actual, the, the entire building. I don't know that piece. If you could shed some light on that piece, uh, Mr. Jones?
The fire protection, this, uh, the fire alarm system and all that is in the city of Forest Park. So when they get their inspections, he is inspecting their space. We inspect the mall. We have like eighty percent of the mall in Forest Park. So that's why Jonas Roberts, the fire inspector for Fairfield, he inspected her space. It probably was approved. We have no knowledge what happens in Fairfield.
But the mall itself.
Yeah, and they're inside the cover mall. They're inside the covered building mall.
Right. And we knew that there were violations there for years.
Yes.
As a whole.
Yes.
And so that communication to the tenants was the responsibility of the owner.
It's responsible to the owner, but.
I wouldn't know any context with anybody in Fairfield. And, and for me to get into Be Fit, I don't have any context. I don't have a membership to get into the room. So it's hard to get in contact with these two different entities. So Delmer was left to him. Before we had this, this shutdown happen, it was up to Delmer to inform the two businesses.
Right. I think that, I think in terms of onus, um, you know, is there, and I know that, um, Mr. Wyckoff of, of, is not, is not present this evening, um, but I'm not sure. And perhaps maybe, um, Mr. Jones, Jo- Jones and Jones, um, um, can, can shed some light, but, um, from the dollars, you know, this owner's, it, all he pays is his million. Um, his million on the bond, right? In order to keep it.
Pays, yes, he pays.
Right.
The bond. He pays the property tax, which are significantly lower than they used to be because the, 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 uh, the property's been devalued so much. Um, and then he pays an additional special assessment, um, approximately, I think, one point two million a year to pay for the loan on the, uh, on the, or the bonds, everyone call them. The, uh, the Port Authority owns the parking garage and forty acres of parking. Um, all of that is the property of the park of the, uh, Port Authority of Cincinnati. And on that, there's some operating agreements, a lot of contractual things going on there. But the bottom line is there's a loan on that that, that built those way back when. And, um, it's up to the mall owner to pay that debt service on those parking facilities. And he has been doing that.
Mm-hmm.
So he's not delinquent on his loan.
Okay. Right. So I guess what I was getting to though is there, so we can't, so the, the owner also cannot be liable for what has happened in terms of having to pony up, so to speak, any, any funds in a contractual manner when the lease was, when, when the lease was taken out with, with these individuals and/or in moving forward with a new developer or owner, there can't be dollars that are redirected to the harm that was done previously.
If, uh, I mean, those are contractual relationships between the two owners.
Right, but nobody here right now is an attorney, so.
Right.
That's conjecture.
Exactly. So those are the things that we are going to look into, is my point. Um, because those are questions that are very valid. So that we can kind of see in totality how these things happen. And then, of course, in moving forward, whatever, you know, we've got owners as a city, you still have a degree of responsibility for people that operate in, in our, in our city. And that desire to lend out their spaces to people. You know, and you're protecting lives. You've got safety concerns and issues and things like that. So those are things that we are going to also look into and make sure that those are, um, that those agreements are on point.
Well,
I'm finished.
A couple of things, thanks, a lot to address, and I'll be quick, is I, I can't hire an attorney now because I'm unemployed. I went from making a very good salary to zero dollars an hour, like Dr. Cobb said, and, and it's frantic. I appreciate the apology, Mayor Brown, and the empathy and the sympathy you asked what, what can be done. If we all work together, I want to stay in Forest Park. Let's make the mall, the mall's a memory. You know, we, you guys don't like it. Chief Jones doesn't like it. I, let's move on from it with your guys' support. I don't need a ton. For my business, and, and I don't, you know, Kenya and Pat's business model is probably different, but for my business model, I need to be operable. I, I need to be operable by January first. And I don't need a big lump sum payment because, you know, the mall shut down and that's somebody's fault. But I do need, I, I could use some cooperation, getting that sprinkler system right. And we already had a conversation about that. And, and that's, or getting in the promenade. I want to stay in Forest Park. I don't want to go over to Fairfield. We have a relationship here, and we can communicate more after this, you know, as, as the week goes on. I mean, that's enough space for me. That's where it's at. And I just want to be sure when I sign that lease. And we can't, we can't cry over what has happened. Yes, it would have been great to have a thirty-day notice. But like Dr. Moore stated, her husband is one of fourteen hundred people that came to the door and scratched their heads and are trying to figure out whatever, because this has become part of their daily routine over the last five, six, seven years. It's changed their lives. That's why people supported during COVID. They demanded that they don't stop paying. That's the only reason why that I'm even here and as a business owner. The people that we have coming, the first responders, the community, the, we are Forest Parks, why would we go to Fairfield? Why would we go to Fairfield just because I'm scared of Forest Park? But you guys have restored some confidence. If we can back that up, let's move Be Fit. Let's make it bigger. Let's make it better. Let's make it better than any of the other gyms. Just need help.
He found somewhere else in this.
Oh, yeah, he's, he's, that's, they've looked at it, would check it out.
Okay.
That's good, so.
Okay. No, all right, would need to come for a planet or not.
No, I think the issue, the issue, I think, and then you can, I mean, you can talk to this. You were there today, but I think the issue's the size and whether or not the sprinkler system works in there.
Yeah, we have all it offer. I mean, I think the, I think landlords are willing to, to bring it forward. I just, we, it's now a time is just the issue. That's why, you know, that's why I started off saying, had I just given, if I had I known for thirty, thirty days, you know, or something, we, my members would have a place to workout possibly today rather than go into the Planet Fitness in Fairfield.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
May I please just offer a thought? So obviously, as a physician, safety is huge. I, I'm not trying to put people in a unnecessary risk situation. But having worked out at Be Fit for many years, we come to the door that is right off the parking lot. We go in that door and we come out that door. If something were to happen, we just go out the door into the parking lot. I mean, at, at the moment, even if there was a fire, what's going to stop us from just going out the door to the parking lot?
If the fire was at the door?
I mean, right now, I'm trying to figure out, I mean, I understand safety for, I'm a physician for God's sake. Okay, I get it. But what danger are we actually in right now from, from Be Fit? If you've ever been there, you know that you go in it. I, I never go into the mall from Be Fit. I just go in and out from the parking lot. And there's no obstructions. It's, it, the, the, the space to get to the door and get out is very wide open. And if something were to happen, okay, just get your butt out. I don't, I don't know even that we need to, even while all this stuff is being done, why does the place need to be shut down? Nobody's in danger. All we gotta do is go out the door and you're at the parking lot. I mean, sometimes the simplest things is right before you.
Yeah, that, why.
Aggress, the gate is closed. He's supposed to go through the mall.
There's two doors.
It's two doors.
There's two doors.
Why?
No, your, your front, yeah, your front, yeah, your front.
Just really quick, that will be, I think that will be up to fire code and we don't have the time to get into the nuances that of, of all that entails. But I'm just asking specifically as far as getting back up to operation, as far as relocation, uh, that's the crux of my, my question. Like what specifically do business owners need? Because for the sake of time, I am trying to be respectful because I know this is a, a very touchy issue, but we can't get into the, the details of that, but.
But I do think that as you're deciding what to do, honestly, there's no sound reason why Be Fit couldn't, couldn't be operating right now while you're getting these things together. Because we just go in and out the door right out of, off the parking lot. I'm just saying.
Ms. Flowers, and then we'll have to close public comment at this time.
It is my hope that we are able to reach a conclusion.
No, Councilwoman, let her speak so we can.
By January the first.
There's still other items. We have that, we got that noted, please.
I just wanted to say, um, also with Be Ventures, we don't have membership. So we basically had a lot of parents and parents, um, book parties that just to keep our name good, we have to give them back there. We gave them their money back. We operate off of what's booked already. Also, we do a lot of, um, we've been doing all of the class reunions for Wenton Woods. Um, so, and repasses for people in Forest Park. So we're a big entity, also to Forest Park. Um, basically, that was it. Just letting you know, we just don't open record party parties. A lot of people, uh, community stuff is hell there.
All right. And just one question, um, I'm not as familiar with Be of Interest. This is health related business?
It's a, um, yes, it's a bouncy house, um, but it's, it's for, for children and families. Family come and they get, it's tons of, but they, we have people to come. I have a son that has disability thing. So they come and get exercise where they can't go to the gym. They come in there because grown people, huh?
How many employees do you have?
It's all family. So both of my, three of, all my kids are out of business, um, me, me and it's, it's all family around. My three children, four children and.
Ms. Flowers, have you identified a space in Forest Park that if you could move to, you would, you would be more than willing to accept?
No, I haven't. I've been looking, but I haven't seen anything that's like, um, off the street. Like we really need to be in like a strip mall where you can see it's not enclosed anymore. Because one reason why we stayed there is because it was previous, um, and it was already known. So it was familiar. But otherwise, we've been looking. So if anyone's any space that's.
Well, we, we urge you to give it to the city manager.
We have twenty-five thousand. We don't even have to.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Flowers. At this time, we're going to close public comment, but we do thank everyone for coming. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, is it at all possible for Mr. Um, Jones to do a ninety second or sixty second response to the?
We are pressed for time and since they're already working, Mr. Jones and Mr. Jones, no relation.
Public is where you all can go to the website and get some more information about that because a lot of people are going to be thinking what you're thinking, Dr. Cobb.
We do have to get, move on. But thank you all for coming tonight. Um, so we're going to close communications from the public. Please continue to work with the chief and the city manager. And then hopefully we can get the situation rectified to, to the best of everybody's, uh, what everybody will want. Um, so at this moment, we're going to move into item number five on the agenda, which is reports from standing committees. But, um, this is where we kind of get into the nitty gritty. So if anybody feels that they need to leave, we won't be offended. Uh, please do so. But we do appreciate you for coming and please stay in contact. All right. So we're going to go to the first report, um, from Councilmember Adams.
Yes, uh, Mayor, I do have a report. Um, I'd like to reiterate again, and I'll keep bringing it every week, the five-one-three relief program. There is money for rent, utilities, property tax and mortgage. There's one particular mortgage program I like to bring to everyone's attention where you do not need to have a COVID impact statement. Um, again, five-one-three-relief.org is where you will go or you will go to the Hamilton County Job and Family Services, uh, website. Also, if you have questions, um, I like to give an email address, um, have a PM, please write this down. It is H A M I L underscore B O C C underscore E R A P, E R A P at J F S dot Ohio dot gov. If you have any questions regarding rent, utility, mortgage assistance, uh, property tax, please send your emails there. And again, uh, Hamilton County Mortgage Relief Program, you do not have to have a, uh, direct, uh, COVID impact statement to qualify. And for a family of one, the income can be about forty, forty thousand. So there's a three hundred percent, uh, poverty, uh, level that, uh, is available for families to apply for this program. Also too, you can call me, um, in my office if you need to at five-one-three-nine-four-six-four-four-one-seven and I'll be able to give you the email address or give you some direction on what it is that you need to do, um, in an effort to get some assistance.
All right. Thank you for that. Thank you for that, Councilwoman. Do you, I don't have any work session items. Do you have any to add?
No, sir, not at this time.
All right. Moving on to Councilmember Clark.
I don't have a report at this time.
All right. Do you have any work session items to add at this time?
I do not, sir.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Harrison.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, staff and, uh, citizens. Um, I have nothing at this time, but I want to give thanks to all the citizens who've signed up for various committees in the city. Um, if you're still interested, please visit our website. We do have a lot of committees that can still use some great citizens', um, input. And that's all I have. And I have nothing else to add.
All right. Thank you for that. Councilmember, moving on to First Vice Mayor.
I do not have a report. Thank you. And I don't have anything for the work session.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to, uh, Second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore.
Thank you. I do not have a report at this time.
Do you have any work session items to add?
No, I do not.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just a shout out to Friscus for, uh, doing a great job on hosting the Breakfast with Santa uh, this past Saturday on the Wind Road. The, uh, the, the children, uh, were delighted. They, uh, they were happy. And it was a, uh, a good event for them and the parents. So, uh, the city of Forest Park, we want to say thank you to Friscus for the, for doing a great job. And, um, beyond that, I, I don't have any other, uh, comments or items to add to, to the next agenda meeting.
Okay. Thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. Uh, and that concludes item number five, reports from standing committees. Moving on to item number six, which is the mayor's report. And I just want to echo the sentiments from Councilmember Sylvester. I did get to attend the Breakfast with Santa, so we do want to thank Friscus for allowing us to host that. Um, I, I was only there for twenty minutes and the line was literally out the door. Um, there were over two hundred kids, um, from what I heard the estimate was of people who came to participate. And then they all received, you know, they had a raffle, kids received toys. Um, and it was just really, a really great family fun e- event. Um, and then also we just actually had the tree lighting ceremony tonight at seven PM. There was a great turnout there. A lot of kids, once again, were getting candy canes and they even got to, um, do little letters to Santa and vote it up and put it into a little mailbox there. So I just thought that was really cute, uh, because we do like when residents come out to events. We like having these events for residents. But, um, that concludes my report. But I will add to the work session that we need to still revise the committee commission review process. Um, so we're going to add that on there and that is the only item I'm going to add at this time. And that concludes my report. So moving on to item number seven, which is the city manager's report. All right.
Well, I'll keep it pretty, pretty short and sweet. I was going to give a nice long mall update. So I think I'll pass on that since we've had a nice discussion. And, um, the library as well, we're going to update the library, but we are in the process of, uh, we should be closed here very shortly on the land. And of course, they'll begin their construction, uh, they're scheduled to come to the, uh, I think the next work session for the, uh, planning commission. Uh, I think it's the next work session anyway. So that's going to be coming forward, uh, rather quickly. And hopefully we can get that thing moving forward and get it in on time and on budget and help them, um, get all those great things that, that will be housed within that new library, uh, make them available to our citizens. Uh, also there, the, uh, we talked about our RFP, request for proposals for the, um, development proposals for the Northland area redevelopment plan. The, that still is ongoing and December thirty, or excuse me, December twenty-first is the cutoff date for, for those proposals to be in. So we'll be giving you another update, uh, once we get, uh, once, once that deadline hits and we can put together all of the proposals. And, um, finally, there's a, uh, on December sixteenth is the Christmas yard judging. So the, make sure you get out there and, uh, put up your Christmas decorations and, uh, people will be going around and judging everybody's yards. And, uh, it's always a lot of fun and there's a lot of great, uh, decorations here in the city. Take it very ser- serious and there's, seems like a lot of, uh, folks decorate their, their, their property and, uh, do a really good job. So we're going to do that again. Again, we've done that many years and we'll continue to do that. Other than that, if you have any questions, concerns, I'll be glad to address any of them.
Don, for the Christmas yard judging, are, do we already have the amount of judges that we need or are people still signing up or?
Uh, it's my understanding that, Scott, do we have enough? I, I think we've got enough.
I believe we do. Uh, I'll check and.
I think we, I think we have, I think it's, they're ready to go.
All right. What's the typical process for people to sign up if they want and, you know, in the future?
They call the city.
Some people have been calling me complaining that they didn't get to judge or their house wasn't judged or, um, if we could just get out the information, um, once again, communication, if we can get that information out to people so they all, they know how they can sign up and everything.
In the, in the past, it's always been that anybody that wanted their house to judge.
Contact the city.
And the people that did the judging were the actual members of the committee. Yeah, the beautification.
Right.
Commission. But the person that want their house judged, they call and that house will be judged. And there are some houses, when I was on the committee, there were some houses that, that not called, but they did such an outstanding job, we didn't just pass them up. We also gave them a certificate for decorating also. But the recommendation is to call and say, I want my house judged.
On Facebook page that, that you want to use it for.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that.
All right. So that concludes item number seven. Moving on to item number eight, which is, uh, other reports. And we're going to skip the law director since he's not here, but we're going to move on to our clerk of council, Ms. Tikiya Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers thirty-eight dash twenty-twenty-two, thirty-nine dash twenty-twenty-two and forty dash twenty-twenty-two and resolution number forty-nine dash twenty-twenty-two proposed as required. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Moving on to item number nine, which is unfinished business and general orders. Um, I need a motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read ordinance numbers thirty-eight dash twenty-twenty-two and thirty-nine dash twenty-twenty-two for the second time by title only. These ordinance were, ordinances were read for the first time on November first, twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
It moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Very now, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark? Yes. Yes.
All right. Motion to appoint John R. Law Director again passes seven zero. Uh, moving on, uh, will the clerk please read ordinance number thirty-nine dash twenty-twenty-two by title only?
Ordinance number thirty-nine dash twenty-twenty-two and ordinance appointing Darren E. Nye, attorney at law, as public defender and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the provision of legal services.
All right. Is there a motion? Me, actually. So it's me. All right. So, uh, I move that the city adopt, uh, the recommendation to, uh, appointing Mr. John R. Wyckoff as the law director and prosecutor of the city, uh, once again.
Second.
All right. It's been moved improperly seconded. Um, yeah, John has actually been with our city, what, twenty-two years? Yeah. So, yeah, our law director is actually very good, comes highly recommended. Um, he's been in, in service to the city. He's not here tonight, so don't let that be a reflection on his actual, um, his actual work. His work quality is really good. Um, so we're just going to go ahead and, um, reappoint him to another couple of years of service. And this is kind of annual, on an annual basis that we, uh, review this again. But I would urge adoption of this motion. So will the clerk please call the role on the motion?
Harrison?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
All right. Motion to appoint John R. Law Director again passes seven zero. Uh, moving on, uh, will the clerk please read ordinance number thirty-nine dash twenty-twenty-two by title only?
Ordinance number thirty-nine dash twenty-twenty-two and ordinance appointing Darren E. Nye, attorney at law, as public defender and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the provision of legal services.
All right. So I move to adopt ordinance number thirty-nine dash twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
All right. It's been moved improperly seconded. Um, just, this is another kind of housekeeping item. Uh, Darren E. Nye, he's actually been with the city for a while as, as well. He's our public defender, just in case we ever have to go into litigation. Um, so he's contractual, um, and, um, he's, I think, I think he might have been here as long as John. He used to work with John, I believe, I believe. So, um, I would urge adoption of this motion. All right. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Hope?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Ordinance number thirty-nine dash twenty-twenty-two passes seven to zero. So that concludes unfinished business. Moving on to item number ten on the agenda, which is new business. So I need a motion to suspend.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only. Ordinance number forty dash twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
It moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
This ordinance was posted six days prior to the meeting.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Motion to suspend passes seven to zero. Um, I'm actually going to need another motion to amend this agenda to declare an emergency. Yeah.
Um, the clerk will read it by title only.
Oh, she'll read it first. Okay. Clerk, please read this, uh, ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number forty dash twenty-twenty-two and ordinance amending chapter thirty-four, employee fringe benefits of the codified ordinances of the city of Forest Park.
Mr. Mayor, some will move to adopt, but then some will, uh, move to amend it.
Okay.
So you won't vote on the move to adopt.
Right. Okay. Well, so I need a, yeah, I need a motion.
Move to adopt, um, ordinance number forty dash twenty-twenty-two.
That's Harrison's, right?
Yes.
I apologize.
No problem. No problem.
Say it again.
I'm making a motion to adopt the ordinance. I make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending chapter thirty four of the codified ordinance of the city of Forest Park.
Second.
It moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion? Now I need a mo- a motion to amend.
Motion, motion to amend ordinance forty dash twenty twenty two.
Second.
All right. It's been moved improperly seconded. Um, is there any further discussion? We need the, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The motion to amend is to add the title. So you're adding an, an emergency to the title. And then you're also adding a clause to.
And we're adding a clause? Emergency clause, right. Okay. All right. Well, Councilwoman, um, who made the motion?
I made the motion to amend. So a motion to amend number forty dash twenty twenty two and adding the emergency clause?
Yes, to add in the title.
To add in the title, the emergency clause.
Yes.
And this is so we can vote on it tonight?
Yes.
Right.
And you also add to section three.
To section?
That, that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure.
Okay. To add the emergency clause, that in section three, that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the im- the immediate preservation of the health, safety and welfare of the employees of the city of Forest Park and shall take effect immediately? It needs a second.
Second.
All right. It's been moved improperly seconded. Um, is there any further discussion? All right. Hearing now, will the clerk please call, uh, the role on the motion to amend?
Yes. Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
All right. The amendment passes seven to zero. Now I need a motion to adopt. Councilman, Councilmember, yes?
I make a motion to adopt, um, chapter thirty four, point fringe benefits of the codified ordinances of the city of Forest Park.
Second.
Moved improperly seconded. Is there any, uh, well, as amended, as amended, correct?
Yes.
All right. It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion, Councilmember?
Uh, no, at this time.
Okay. All right. Will the clerk please call the role on, uh, the motion to adopt as amended?
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
That wasn't everybody.
Who I missed?
Oh, was it? I was counting in my head. I, I missed out. My bad. It's me. All right. Uh, so ordinance number forty, uh, dash twenty twenty two passes seven to zero. Um, we are not, we are not this unorganized normally. Please forgive, I'm tired. But no, um, okay. So I need another motion to suspend.
Make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only. Resolution number forty nine dash twenty twenty two.
Second.
All right. It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Only that this resolution was posted, uh, six days prior to the meeting.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to suspend passes seven to zero. Um, will the clerk please read resolution number forty nine dash twenty twenty two?
Resolution number forty nine dash twenty twenty two, a resolution to enter into a consultant agreement with Center for Employment Opportunities, Inc., for transitional work services to the city of Forest Park.
All right. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
I'm motioning that we move to adopt resolution number forty nine dash twenty twenty two.
Second.
All right. It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Other than we've, uh, uh, we're entertained on the details involved with the contractual agreement with the, uh, Center for Employment Opportunities for the city to, uh, uh, take some, uh, opportunity advantages to, uh, to obtain some additional, uh, supportive work that's needed to help balance out with the employment status here. So, uh, this would be in a one year status on this contract. So, uh, we're looking for, uh, looking for, uh, good benefits out of it and a good opportunity for the city to, uh, have some advancement. So. With that.
A lot of savings too, right, Scott?
Yes.
Okay, good.
So with that, I, I move that we adopt the resolution forty nine dash twenty twenty two.
Thank you for that, Councilmember. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Okay. So resolution number forty nine dash twenty twenty two passes seven to zero. All right. And then, uh, is there a motion that concludes item number B? So item number C, is there a motion, Councilmember Harrison?
Uh, yes. I make a motion to amend Dr. Lewis Button's reappointment to the planning commission from November thirtieth, twenty twenty five to November thirtieth, twenty twenty seven.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yes. Dr. Burton's, um, reappointment should have been for a five year term. However, due to a clerical error, he was only reappointed to a three year term at the November twenty first, twenty twenty two council meeting.
Okay. Thank you for that, Councilmember. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to amend?
Harrison?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
All right. Motion to amend passes seven to zero. So at this time, actually, before we go to adjournment, we don't need any, uh, point of order. We don't need any more motions to amend. We're just going to return to the work session item or do we need to adjourn in order to return to work session?
Adjourn the work session.
Adjourn first. Okay. All right. So that is all the items.
Sorry, adjourn the council meeting.
Adjourn the, I, I, I got you. I knew what you meant. No. All right. So at this time, we are going to adjourn council. So is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? All right. This council meeting is adjourned.